Welcome, everybody. This table is really high and the seats are really low. And I feel like I'm about six years old at my grandmother's Thanksgiving dinner. At the children's table. Either that, or I'm John the Baptist with his head on a platter. Glad you are here. Let's take a moment of prayer. Good and gracious God, help us to recognize your living and loving presence among us as we meet, to learn more about our church and its workings and the things that are happening, how we can serve you more effectively and faithfully. So bless our time together and everyone's participation. And we ask this in the name of Jesus. Amen. Well, as we kind of get organized, I'm going to ask, where'd Tom go? Tom Anderson? Okay, let's, does everybody have a card? Okay, raise your hand if you don't have a card or a pencil. And Tom will deliver the goods. So, we're going to just take a few moments as we gather. And I want you to write down, and then we'll collect, what excites me about Trinity Cathedral? Okay, so take a moment and write down something, and then we'll share some of them during the course of the meeting. What excites me about Trinity Cathedral? So... While we're doing that, we'll just, I want to offer a few words about gratitude. Because that really grounds everything that we do. In God's gracious love for which we are grateful. And then we share that gratitude, especially through the stewardship of our time, talent, treasure, and our prayer. So I want to share with you a favorite quote of mine. It's from Diana Butler Bass. Anyone know Diana Butler Bass? Yeah, she's a writer, she's a historian, writer on historical, on history. She's written a book called Gratitude. And this is from gratitude. She calls it "The Subversive Practice of Giving Thanks." I love that, "The subversive practice of giving thanks." And you know it's subversive because whenever you're feeling grumpy and somebody says, "Thank you," it changes your outlook just in that moment. Here's what Diana Butler Bass says. "Gratitude empowers us. It makes joy and love possible. It rearranges the way we see and experience what is all around us. Gratitude makes all things new. It transforms how we understand what is broken and gives us the ability to act more joyfully and with hope. That is why gratitude is central to all the world's religions. As a practice, it embodies the wisdom of humanity's greatest spiritual teachers. That is, the love of neighbor. Gratitude takes us from abstract belief to living compassionately in the world." If you look at our mission statement, you'll see, I think, it summarizes that. We'll come to that in a little bit. She goes on to say, "Being grateful isn't a magic wand or kind of prosperity mantra. Rather, it rearranges the way we see the world. As we practice redirecting our attention towards the gifts in our lives, gratitude lessens our fears, strengthens our hearts, and builds our resilience." Well, one of the things I've noticed in my time among you is growing gratitude and growing giving and growing graciousness. And I want to lift that up. I probably will be leaving in early January, and a new priest will be on board, and Kate will share a little bit of that with you. I don't want to do any premature crepe hanging. But at some point, I will be departing. And I'm departing with a really grateful heart for what you have done as a community in this year, more than a year and a half that I've been here. This has been a wonderful experience, and it continues to be a wonderful experience. And I just want to lift up my gratitude for what you've done. And I think it's been grounded in seeing one another as gifts to each other. And as I have kidded, some of my colleagues, sometimes after church, all four services, it's difficult to get people out of here. They're just hanging out because they are enjoying each other. They appreciate being together, and they find support and encouragement from one another. And another thing that I'm grateful for is, behind the scenes, the caring that goes on between members and friends. There's a lot of care goes on as people check in, touch bases with friends who join the pews with you. I'm grateful for all those things, and I'm sure you are as well. So I wanted to underline gratitude as we begin our meeting. And it undergirds all the ways we share our thankful, gracious theology in our families, in our communities, and of course, in the church. And gratitude makes it possible, as our baptismal covenant expresses us, "The ability to have an inquiring and discerning heart, the courage to will and to persevere, a spirit to know and love God, and the gift of joy and wonder in all God's work." That's the theme of our stewardship this year. Yes. "The ability to have an inquiring and discerning heart, the courage to will and to persevere, a spirit to know and to love God, and the gift of joy and wonder in all God's works." That's, that's what we say right after we baptize someone. So, and from there, that gratitude spreads out in ever widening circles of love. So that is my, those are my words of beginning. And I'd like now to hear from, raise your hand if you have your card filled out. And Tom will start collecting them, and then in a few minutes, we'll share some of those.
Well, while people are finishing their cards, while people are finishing their cards, and I wanted to make sure that we gave, we had an opportunity to give you an update about things that are happening around the church. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Kate Flokini. I'm blessed with being the senior warden for the year. And so, along with Barb Marquand, our junior warden, and Ann Morgan, the clerk or secretary, it's our job to keep the ships moving along in all kinds of different areas. So I wanted to tell you some of those things that are happening. The first is about the search committee, an important piece. We wanted to thank the search committee that's been tirelessly working for quite a long time now. They're taking the job very seriously and doing an amazing job of working together and working to bring forward candidates for us so that we can have a wonderful choice and a good rector in the future. Those people on the search committee are Margaret Brown, Howard Bennett, Gary Parks, Catherine Landreth, Lisa K. Bryan, and I know I'm going to forget somebody, so Margaret, catch me. Josette Dornoff, John Lilly, and Cindy Humphries. And Kurt Michie, thank you. I knew there was a name I was missing. Thank you, Margaret. So Kurt Michie is on the team as well. So they've been working very hard. They have started, they have done interviews. They've gotten many applications. They whittled that down to people they wanted to interview initially. And from that, they've arranged for visits. So that's the, that's the usual process in a search, is that after they do an interview process, then they go visit the primary candidates or the main candidates that they've chosen from that process. And they go see them at their home churches, their current churches and homes. And then they will recommend candidates to come here for a visit. And so we're in the process of arranging those things right now. From there, the search committee will recommend, and the vestry will make a choice of someone to call to the position of dean and rector. And of course, that person will hopefully choose us also. It's a, it's a discernment process for both sides, both the church and the candidate. And so, we hope that we will come to a sort of a mutual agreement at the end of the day about who will be the best person to be our dean and rector moving forward. Then we do some of that nitty gritty procedural stuff. And, and then start arranging for when they'll make it here. Like the dean referenced, our, our best estimate is that that will happen in the winter. It will happen after Christmas and at some point during that winter season. So, that's the search committee process. And if you, if, the search committee does a very good job of updating everybody in the Carolin, the weekly newsletter that gets sent out by email. So for more information and going forward, that's a good place to look for that. I also wanted to make sure everyone knew that we are in the process of working on restoring the stained glass windows in this building. Some of them are in great condition, and some of them are in not so great condition. The process started because we'd had some vandalism to our beautiful today and window at the front. But while we were working on how to better protect that window, we also asked a conservation company to evaluate all of the windows and tell us what our project should be going forward. This is a multi-year project that will absolutely not interfere with the big parish hall project, but it is something that we need to do to keep maintaining and preserving our beautiful cathedral space. So...
Karen's going to lead a class next week.
So Karen is leading a class next week. Karen Hankey is leading a class next week about our windows. So please come and enjoy that. Karen knows so much, and she's an amazing resource. And these windows are just a treasure trove. If you talk with Karen, she lets us know about all of that stuff. For, for that committee that's working on the restoration, I wanted to thank Margaret Zuccarini, Howard Craig Akervik, Karen Hankey, Howard Bennett, and Jerry Lilly for all of their work behind the scenes, making sure that we continue to protect and preserve our building. They have one application out right now already for a grant, and I know that they're working on the process for more. Also important for you to know is that our finance teams are already working on a budget for next year. That's part and parcel of the stewardship process. And we also have, we are at the tail end of an audit of the 2022 year. So that's being finalized. It's an important procedural administrative thing that churches need to do to make sure that we are engaging in best practices and being the best stewards that we can be of the money that you give to the church. Our treasurers, Carol Roman and Lyndi Campbell, are integrally engaged in both of those processes. And Dave Morgan, as the retired treasurer, is also being very supportive, making sure that we get through the audit process for last year. And we appreciate his time and efforts in that respect. We also have a finance and administration committee, which is led by Nancy Richards and Betsy Bethke, Terry Kane, Barb Marquand. Our treasurers, Frank Baird and Will Aldrich, are involved in that process. And they're the ones that are taking the laboring oar on getting us a draft budget. So we appreciate all of their time and efforts and energy that they put towards, behind the scenes, making sure that we keep moving smoothly. As you know, we had a goal of being together more. Making sure that we were able to enjoy each other's company and be in our community. And that has been realized this year. Both the, so between the June picnic, our combined services for the summer, the July potluck that was in conjunction with the Pipes on the River concert, our August picnic, the recent EYE spaghetti dinner night, all were well attended and great events where we got together and got to enjoy each other's company outside of worship. We have upcoming the Angel Tree Dinner that will be in early November. And then Trinity, I believe, will be hosting the interfaith Thanksgiving service this year in November. So those are all opportunities for us to get together again and, and in some, some respects, break bread and enjoy each other's company in addition to worshiping. Finally, behind the scenes again, it's important for you guys to know, we're getting a new website. It's in process. We have a, I think they call it a sandbox. There's, there's a website that's been started and that we're giving input back to the designer about all of the nitty gritty little pieces before it gets published officially onto the wide world. And, and the new website will be professionally maintained, which we think is important for our outreach to the community to make sure that people know who we are and that we are presenting our best face on the internet. I want to say thank you to Michael Bassett, who has taken the lead on getting that website updated and, and organizing all of the people that are needed to help get the updates to the web designers. And he has engaged support from Terry Kane and John Sealmeier, John Bukola, Marne McKimmey. And our Trinity staff has been integral in making sure that our website is updated and gives the best information that we have to people who are looking into us and trying to find out what's happening at Trinity. So thank you to all of those people for their, again, behind the scenes efforts to make sure that, that everything is going smoothly and that, and that everyone can find what they need at Trinity. So that's all the update information that I, that I prepared for you. I'm looking at our time. We have a couple of minutes. If there was a question or two that people had, and then, and then we'll read some of these, the comments that people have, have given us. Oh, that's what I was, I had just lost it, and it came back. All, a lot of this information is regularly in the Carolin. We, we consistently have just above half of the people who receive the Carolin, open the Carolin and read it. I would love to see that number go up. So we, the, the company that sends it out for us, Constant Contact, tells us how many people who receive it, open it. I'd love to see us get to 75%. That would be really neat. It is a challenge to you. Let's see if we can make it there. So, thank you, everybody, for coming and giving us your time today. Does anyone have any questions? Okay. Of course, I and Barb are always available. Ann's usually available. She's not with us today, but she's usually available regularly to answer any questions during, you know, regular hours.
So if you're not receiving the Carolin by email, there's several reasons why that might be occurring. It could be in your spam box, it could be in promotions box. There may be another issue. But you can always access it at our website. Just go to trinityreno.org, and there's a button, and that'll get you up to date. It comes out at noonish on Fridays. So really encourage you to do that. We produce this each week so that you'll know what's happening in the next week and the weeks that follow. And you also get to see the lessons in advance. Well, let's see what's got people excited around here. Let's, let's start with Barb.
Okay, here's a nice lengthy list. "The sermons are interesting. The Sunday School is well organized. The congregation is welcoming. The order of service is consistent with what we are used to and well organized." Would you like me to do another one?
No, just several more.
Okay. And another person says, "They're excited about the fellowship here and how members are friendlier." "And TEC is a place to come and recharge and always be a real place and conflict resolver." I think I might be, I hope I'm reading that right.
TEC is the Episcopal Church.
The Episcopal Church. I thought there must be a group here I'm not familiar with. This person is grateful for the Sunday service at 7:30, organ concerts, and Stephen Bray.
Thank you.
So, some great comments. This person is excited about our community that's comprised of and has opportunities for all age groups to be together and be engaged. They also enjoy the outreach activities to the Reno community. And I think a lot of people will echo this one, that they are excited that Trinity Episcopal Cathedral welcomes all, welcomes everybody. Lots of comments about enjoying the worship services and the liturgy, the beautiful liturgy that, that our priests work hard to provide to us every week and the worship service. This person is excited about the future. So that's great to hear. And the fellowship that we have here at Trinity. And, and a couple of comments here. People are excited about the music that we have, our music programs. I'm sure that they are excited and happy that we have Brian here with us. And probably these people are enjoying the choir being back in session. So, those are some of our comments.
So I'll share a few. And I am excited about our music program and our choir doing fun things with and bringing the joy of our music to our youth. Thank you. Another one, fellowship and interaction with our children. Here's another one. The music programming, now that Brian is here. Second, the addition of social events like the search for the perfect happy hour. Yay! And it says, "Thank you, Ruth." She is the minister of the perfect happy hour. Traditional worship. The Trinity Communion and all the myriad and often...
Not known.
Not known talents, education sermon, education, sermons, love people and love... Telling people about Trinity. Love telling people about Trinity. Cool. So those are some of the comments, and so we'll do a few more later on. But getting back to my statement on gratitude. Wow, that makes my heart glad that you all are excited about things that really make a church go and grow. And so, we'll leave it there. We wanted to set us, oh, Barb, did you have something you wanted to say?
I don't think so, do I?
Okay, all right. Well, then you don't have to say anything if you don't think so.
Am I supposed to?
No.
If you were moved, but you're not scheduled.
So, okay. So, we wanted to talk about, with grateful hearts, looking forward to our stewardship program. And Ann Morgan is our stewardship chair. And where is Ann Morgan? Well, stay tuned, okay? She's written a letter. "Good morning." And she is watching, by the way. "Good morning, Ann. My name is Ann Morgan, and I serve as chair of the stewardship committee this year. Full disclosure, I am not Ann Morgan." But she is home watching us to make sure that we hear every word that she writes, along with Gary Fuller, Margaret Zuccarini, Cleta Dillard, and Brandon Harger. So we're going to share her letter.
Yep, so I have Ann's letter that she has prepared for us. And we're sad that Ann's not here, but we're going to do our best impression. In true lawyer fashion, it's much easier to talk standing up, so hopefully this works with the Zoom. Here are Ann's words. "Wonder in all. What a beautiful, affirming way to think about our faith. Over the next six weeks, we will be on a journey of storytelling and wonder through our own baptismal promises and through the faithful promises of our church community. We've heard about some of the things that excite our congregation, and I want to share some of the things that excited our vestry when we took a wonder inventory at our last meeting. So we engaged in this similar process. We thought about the things that excited us about Trinity and things that made us in awe of the wonder in all of our experience here at Trinity. Members were excited about the young adult program. They were grateful for the abundance of help and love and generosity of heart that is present in our youth program. In the same vein, another member noted that they felt the Holy Spirit at work when they saw kids running into their community of both peers and adults at church. One of my favorite comments was how grateful they were to experience what the young adults said and how they see the world. Did you know that Trinity often has more than 30 children and teens attending Sunday services? Others saw wonder in the music program, the choir, the concerts, and specifically called out our organist, Brian. As many of you know, the Trinity Cathedral pipe organ is the second largest instrument in Nevada. Budding young artists and nationally known organists routinely play concerts in the cathedral. Recent guests have included Jennifer Pascal, principal organist of St. Patrick's Cathedral in New York City, and Angela Kraft Cross, a San Francisco area organist and composer. Last year, Dorothy Jean Papadakis, an organist, composer, playwright, and former organist at the Cathedral of John the Divine in New York City, played organ improvisations in the style of silent movies as concertgoers watched Dr. Jekyll and Mr. Hyde on a large screen. She is returning in November 2023 for another silent movie performance, and they're amazing." But she is home watching us to make sure that we hear every word that she writes along with Gary Fuller, Margaret Zuccarini, Cleta Dillard, and Brandon Harger. So we're going to share her letter.
Yep, so I have Ann's letter that she has prepared for us and we're sad that Ann's not here, but we're going to do our best impression. In true lawyer fashion, it's much easier to talk standing up, so hopefully this works with the Zoom. Here are Ann's words. Wonder in awe, what a beautiful affirming way to think about our faith. Over the next six weeks, we will be on a journey of storytelling and wonder through our own baptismal promises and through the faithful promises of our church community. We've heard about some of the things that excite our congregation and I want to share some of the things that excited our vestry when we took a wonder inventory at our last meeting. So we engaged in this similar process. We thought about the things that excited us about Trinity and things that made us in awe of the wonder in awe of our experience here at Trinity. Members were excited about the young adult program. They were grateful for the abundance of help and love and generosity of heart that is present in our youth program. In the same vein, another member noted that they felt the Holy Spirit at work when they saw kids running into their community of both peers and adults at church. One of my favorite comments was how grateful they were to experience what the young adults said and how they see the world. Did you know that Trinity often has more than 30 children and teens attending Sunday services? Others saw wonder in the music program, the choir, the concerts, and specifically called out our organist Brian. As many of you know, the Trinity Cathedral pipe organ is the second largest instrument in Nevada. Budding young artists and nationally known organists routinely play concerts in the cathedral. Recent guests have included Jennifer Pascal, principal organist of St. Patrick's Cathedral in New York City, and Angela Kraft Cross, a San Francisco area organist and composer. Last year, Dorothy Jean Papadakis, an organist, composer, playwright, and former organist at the Cathedral of John the Divine in New York City, played organ improvisations in the style of silent movies as concertgoers watched Dr. Jekyll and Mr. Hyde on a large screen. She is returning in November 2023 for another silent movie performance and they're amazing. Finally, this past summer, Chase Olson, an Oberlin College undergraduate, and Edward Lee, a high school senior from Sunnyvale, California, played recitals for the Pipes on the River series. Still, others commented on the spirit of renewal they felt at Trinity with the clergy and the congregation. Joyfully, Trinity is almost back to pre-pandemic adult attendance, which if you don't, if you follow any of the news about the way church attendance is going, is really an amazing, wonderful feat to be, to be celebrated. Trinity's four weekend services attract approximately 175 people and Trinity's Facebook and YouTube viewings average about 25 a week additionally. Here are some other areas of wonder that might inspire your heart. The connections you make, the flowers on the altar, the meals we prepare, the worship services, the preaching, Bible study, prayer circles, our outreach programs, and those milestones in life, baptisms, confirmations, weddings, and funerals. An essential element of a vibrant and engaging annual giving ministry is the full participation of our leadership team. And I'm proud to tell you that every member of our vestry has already turned in a pledge. Can I have the members of the vestry who are present stand to be recognized, please? Thanks, guys. Do you hand out the giving statement? The vestry also put together a statement on giving and we're going to hand that out to you for your, to review at your leisure. But we wanted to call out a couple of sentences here and I think we have some copies here to hand out. And then I also think that it, that the giving statement will be in the bulletin.
If we can have Tom come and help Barb pass out these statements.
Thanks, Tom.
Tom is our chief usher at 11 o'clock. He said he has a lot of good health. If you're interested in ushering, he's the go-to guy.
It's your guy. Okay, so as you're receiving the vestry giving statement, Ann wanted to make sure that, that we called out a couple of sentences in particular. The first is that we witness Christian stewardship by acknowledging that God blesses us. Those blessings are in our family, friends, and colleagues, both here and in our larger community. Second, by sharing God's blessings through our gifts, Trinity Cathedral's family is able to provide sacramental worship that inspires and supports all of us in our community. Our giving provides ministries that empower and encourage ourselves, those among us, and those beyond us. Our worship in our ministries allow us to meet our stated mission, which if you turn to your bulletin, we can say out loud together and those on vestry may know it by heart. I'm looking at Terry because he's been saying it for a long time, too. Our mission statement is to welcome all people to know and live as Christ in the world. Thank you. Wonderful things are happening at Trinity and because wonderful things are happening at Trinity, wonderful things are happening in the world beyond. This morning's collect includes the words, grant us the fullness of your grace, that we, running to obtain your promises, may become partakers of your heavenly treasure. Over the next six weeks, I urge you to take your own wonder inventory. Focus on God's blessings. Think about your own baptismal promise and then run to obtain God's promises. As you are uplifted, think about how your giving can help uplift others. Thanks.
Well, we found a wonderful way to celebrate giving. And it's from the hymnal, number 707 is the music. Not all the stanzas are in it, but on your giving statement is the complete poem. And we want to commend this to you for your meditation as you think about the stewardship of your life, your time, your talent, your treasure, your prayer, and how you celebrate it and share it. It's pretty all encompassing and I always have liked this and I put it in, suggested it and vestry agreed to include it, that we're not worried about what percentage you give because what God wants is all of you. So the Christian standard for stewardship is 100%. And how, and it's up to each of us to prayerfully come up with what that 100% looks like as we give ourselves completely to God and become people who share God's grace with others. And that'll be different for each and every one of us in terms of time, talent, treasure, and prayer. We're all unique and as we respond, hopefully it's with that gracious heart. And just something that, to remind us all, when we come to communion, the words are, lift up your Yeah, lift up what makes you tick. In other words, you, all of us, you and me. So you've probably never gone to a town hall meeting where you sing, but we're going to sing this hymn now. So look at it and Brian is going to begin it and the music is at 7:07 if you want to see the music. Amen. Yay. Saint Augustine is alleged to have said, to sing is to pray twice. And so to sing twice, I guess, is to pray four times. And so, but it did, I think, capture the spirit of what's happening here at Trinity. And that's why it seemed like a good song to sing. Well, we have a few more comments that we can share and if you, anyone needs coffee really badly, there is time to go get your coffee. Okay, I don't want to repeat myself. Okay. Friendships, music, great sermons, family, music, liturgy. Truly a spiritual place, feelings of community and purpose, a new dean coming and looking forward to positive new changes. Barb?
All right. Friendly, sharing, caring, knowledge, happiness, thankfulness. Also, the liturgy, prayer book, beautiful church, and the music. Another person is grateful for Trinity's caring and supportive people, the music, the organ choir, and singing together. And another person says what excites them about Trinity Cathedral is the music is most exciting, but it's the grounding of the liturgy, the book of common prayer used in every Episcopal church that makes me feel calm and centered. And what excites me about Trinity, beautiful worship space, thoughtful children's worship with dedicated teachers and leaders, multi-generational, beautiful music and liturgy. And then I will add my two cents now. I'm really grateful for the growing sense of vibrancy and joy, a sense of us remembering we can have a good time with one another after, you know, the pandemic is not that far behind us. And, and also a sense of us showing grace to one another, remembering we're all human and not perfect and we can all share God's grace with one another. And I see that happening here.
Yeah, a few more comments. Lots of people enjoy the worship service and our music offerings. Particularly, people are enjoying being back into the traditional service with the choir and the full sermons. Someone commented that being a daughter of the King and supporting the priests and the staff excites them. Being able to bless and support the Stede Elementary School and, in giving around Christmas also excites somebody, the person who wrote that. This person enjoys and is excited by the fellowship and the welcoming nature of our, of our congregation and that we're a very supportive community. What excites me about Trinity, the beauty of the cathedral, the music, especially the organ, and the social aspects of Christian gatherings. This person is excited by the welcoming people, the clergy, their enthusiasm, their preaching, and their pastoral care. They appreciate the SAC Lunch Ministry and the youth ministry and they truly value that we are a truly a value-driven community. And someone is excited about the new beginnings that are coming.
Well, I want to share what I am excited about. I'm excited about your future and I'm really excited that I've been able to be a part of that. But I am excited about what lies ahead. It's going to be exciting, meaningful, transformative, and you are on a wonderful journey and I am blessed to be part of that journey. So that's what I really am excited about. Now, that makes the meeting conclude on a note of gratitude and that's what we began with. That's the engine that drives a successful, faithful church. And so with grateful hearts, dear Lord, we thank you for our gathering today, a chance to discover more of what's taking place at Trinity, about our stewardship program, about the things that excite us, and about our very hopeful future. We pray this in Jesus' name. Amen. We are adjourned.